It's 5:30. I'll call the public hearing to order. This is a public hearing for a minor subdivision application 2025-02. Property owner, David Wagner Trust.
Recording in progress.
Represented by Johnny Wagner. Is that what it's listed as?
That was on the application.
Okay. We'll get into that. Property location, 300 Hastings Lane. Approximately 3.2 acre lot. Proposed to be divided into two lots, approximately 1.34 plus or minus, and 1.86 plus or minus acres. We have here a quorum of the planning commission. I'll note for the record that Andy Scholz has recused himself, although he might be present. Is that Andy?
No.
Oh, hi, Andy.
Yes, yes.
Okay, you're here as an observer today. Can you hear us on Zoom? I guess that's a yes.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, thanks. And we're joined. And representing the applicant is?
Kate Golden with Enigma Castle Ring Engineers.
Okay, thank you, Kate Golden. Okay. Do we have? And they're listed as an agent for the applicant?
Yes.
On the application? Okay. First, I'll ask for any disclosures of conflicts of interest. We already have one. Andy has recused himself. Any others among commissioners? Or any ex parte communication with the applicant? Okay. Here are none. Move on. Interested persons are defined by statute 24 BSA 4465B. Do we have any people that would like to be identified as interested parties in this matter? I don't think so. That's Johnny present. That's the applicant, right? So no one else is present. So David? Only interested persons are able to take appeal of any decision we make. So all adjoining property owners have waived their right to appeal by their failure to be present. Would either the applicant or the representative like to make any statements on behalf of the application or give us a short description of the proposal?
I can speak too.
Okay.
So the... Can I come up?
You may approach. Party, party. You might kind of your bag down.
So this is an updated map from the last time that we were here. Survey map. So I'll just walk through the proposed subdivision. Is this line through the center sort of here? That's not... That hasn't changed since the last time you saw this. The intent is to subdivide this piece of land so that there's one single-family home and then another single-family home with both waterfront access. There won't be any proposed changes to water, sewer, driveway, locations of water lines, sewer lines. They're going to continue utilizing the mound system previously permitted on the lot 3A. My plan is not up here. Do you have the engineering plan that shows the lot 3A? I have a copy too. I can bring. This one.
That one, too.
I'm just highlighting that because I know that was something we discussed last time and I was trying to explain over Zoom.
Yeah, it's tricky. So what were you going to show us here?
So Lot 3A here is this lot that goes like this. And that lot is created... Was created for Lot 2 and Lot 3's septic system. So there's two septic systems over here. I don't have the details for Lot 2 because that's this brown outline here. And then the mound disposal system for the buildings on Johnny's land of Lot 3 disposed to this mound system.
So when we break this up, these two lots, this 3...
3A and 3B. Oh, sorry, 3C and 3B.
Are going to share property rights to 3A?
The... There will be... So this patch of gray that looks like pavement, but it's not. It's showing an easement going to the... Yeah, going to the shared wastewater system.
And 3A ends where?
So it's right along this line here. And then it's up and then all around.
So it's coinciding with that line. So it's hard to see. Okay.
It's all in... Well, not quite all in.
What is it, this line here?
It's not shown here. So there's a lot here. And is it owned in fee? Or they have an easement? Who owns 3A? Is it... They have an easement to his disposal.
Oh, my dear neighbor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Johnny, you can chime in if you want, but I believe it's your neighbor that owns 3A. The same owners as George Wood.
George Wood. Could we talk about the Leach Field? Is that right, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes.
They're... Properties here are sharing easement to the HBL.
Did we get anything back from... Just speaking out of turn here. But did we get anything back from Plymouth?
Yes.
Yeah.
They confirmed that they have no objection. They did just make more comments about the shed and the propane tank lot on the survey.
Right here.
Which they said is actually not on the Plymouth side.
Okay, you're just reciting what they're saying here.
Yes.
So we'll make an exhibit out of this. So we'll have this in the record. This is a letter from the Plymouth assessors. That's interesting. Okay.
So I contacted the town clerk and she said that was a necessary question. So she forwarded this. I think it was either the town clerk or the assistant town clerk.
But we didn't... Their planning commission declined to... They were informed, the select board and the planning commission were informed, right, through our regular notice?
The select board was informed.
Select board, okay. And they have declined to make a statement?
They never responded.
Okay. Well, I just need that on the record. Okay. Fine. Okay, so we don't know for sure the ownership of 3A, but it is not the parties... It is not the applicant.
Yeah. I'm fairly certain it's George Wood. I might have a...
Yes, it says now reformally, so.
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah. I'll let you continue with your statement. I just wanted to get that clarified.
Shared system on Lot 3A. No proposed work. No new buildings, no change in use from what you see labeled on our plan and what was previously permitted through the state wastewater and water supply permit. So the permit series for this project is WW-1-1021. And there's a series of iterations.
And that's the one reflected on the application, right?
Yeah.
This... All of these I've sent you electronically, but this is the history of the wastewater.
Yeah, I knew I had it somewhere.
Okay. Well, I mean, for purposes, it's all properly permitted. There's no changes proposed.
Yep, so they have their state wastewater permit. Well, I guess it would be a subdivision permit through the state approving the subdivision. And there was no change.
And that was with this proposed...
Yeah.
This proposed orientation was the one that was approved?
This is the Vermont DC.
Yeah, okay.
So there's no change in the flow of the system and I'm happy to get into all of the different iterations, but I don't want to give a bunch of information.
I think we're all just good overall... Yeah, what you're proposing to do.
Yeah. So that's all. It's just that... I mean, it sticks out more on our plan, that thicker line, but that corresponds to the same line here. No changes in the town of Plymouth side. So that was why they issued that...
You're ending the division line at the town line?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So who owns the property? I guess it's that part of 3A then up on that side of the town line? Or is that...
This portion here?
3B.
3B. Yeah. So this is less of an overview now and more of an explanation. But there's... I actually saw that you had it based. Mine didn't print the full version. Yeah. So this is the original.
And then C.
Yeah, 3C.
This is the original subdivision. I think you all had...
We did ask about that. Yeah, so it's...
So that's why I am continuing the use of 3A, 3B, 3C, just to be consistent when...
And this one's in the Mount Holly records already?
Yes. I believe that should have the stamp.
Oh, yeah. Well, maybe one day I could have read that.
Yeah. I know. I meant to bring a full-size one and then I ended up not even printing it.
You're giving me a lot of credit.
The full one.
You're beautiful eyes. Didn't it be here? All right. Well, we'll just want to make sure that's in the record, the book and page, if we can get it. Okay, that makes sense now.
Yeah. So there was an original subdivision that already labeled everything.
This is what we were requiring last meeting.
1, 2, 3, yeah.
Okay, so that clarifies that, I believe, as long as we can get. David, do you know offhand, off the top of your head?
Wasn't it page 112? Book 112.
I know that's...
I have to see. Let me see.
Sometimes you know these things, so book and page for that?
Oh.
No?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We'll look it up.
Yep.
So wait, Faith, we have somebody else we're going to need to identify for the attendance. Is that true?
This is 574 Labor. This is 574 Side Meeting. I know, I didn't print the full thing.
Sorry, I don't know if you want to just hold off a second.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's... Mr. Ernst, is that right?
He isn't a butter, so.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hi, I'm suspecting that you may be a joining landowner. Is that right?
I am a landlord, yes.
Yes, okay. We passed this section of the hearing, but I'm happy to go back. Would you like to be identified as an interested party to this proceeding?
Yes, please.
And you are the owner of the lot directly to the north in the town of Plymouth? Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. I'm sorry, I don't know what the lot number is. Your system, that's the right place.
Yeah, well, we can see you on the map here. Does anybody have any concerns about identifying Mr. Ernst as an interested party?
I do not.
Steven?
No.
All right, without objection, you'll be recognized as an interested party, which gives you...
You're only talking about land over here, on this side of that lot.
That gives you statutory standing for appeals of any decision we should make. Also gives you the opportunity to give your input. So we'll get to that in a few minutes. Right now, we're just getting a quick overview of the project from the applicant.
All right, so... Seeing if I have the deep reference. Yeah, I think that's my spiel of proposed subdivision. No proposed change in the use of buildings, no proposed new infrastructure, no proposed new roads, no proposed other permit triggering activities.
Okay. Mr. Wagner, would you like to say anything else? Or is that a full summary?
Hello.
Hi.
And I don't think it's made any... Just... This is the state planning decision. My office is 94 years old. It's a waterfront property to choose. It's one of those restaurants on the main apartment. It's not changing. About the property whatsoever.
Okay. Sounds good. Just want to give you the opportunity.
For taking... Yeah, okay. I don't think this is... And potentially, it's been on the heavy duty.
All right, let's just go quickly through our exhibits here. We have previous subdivision plat on record in the town office. We'll get the book and page. We have a letter from... It just says, Kate, I believe this is you, a letter from you.
So this is an email that I sent to Faith. And I think this might reference...
We'll just add it as an exhibit.
I just saw this map attached. Maybe I don't reference it. Okay, never mind. Map 112. I'd say this should be on file with the town as map 112.
Book 1112.
Is there a different filing system?
Well, we have different...
For maps?
Four books, I believe, at this point, four or five.
For the map, okay.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
We have the letter from the Listers in Plymouth. We have the wastewater permit. We have... This is your final plat.
Yeah.
Okay. And should this be approved? We'll need a Mylar. We've... Okay. I forget where we landed on whether this was to be reported as well. There was some discussion, I believe, at last.
I thought we had discussed it last time if it had been or something. We wanted it to be...
Yeah, I think it should be recorded, but not as the survey. But that plan...
Something, yeah.
Yeah. And that one has details of like bedroom count and...
That's fine with us. Just possible more to do too, but yeah.
I think it'll make sense in 20 years when someone tries to dig it out and figure out what's going on.
I mean, I like... I want kind of more as better kind of information order, but...
Yeah. As someone who frequently has to pull together different maps, I think if they're together, that'll be easier.
Okay, so I think we have... Do we have any state permits besides the wastewater permit? Okay, is that it for the extent of our physical exhibits? And so?
Yep.
Very, okay. All right, well, I think right now we should go through our discussion of the last meeting and just check over whether everything was changed that we asked for. I'm assuming it's true, but it's worth doing. Let's see here. We had a discussion of the stone wall defining the town line, which is still... We can just confirm it on the record in the hearing. That's still present? Okay. Is there any objection to ensuring that that wall persists as a historical monument for the purposes of the town line? Is there any objection from the applicant on whether... Preserving that stone wall? I don't know if Mr. Wagner, you would like to answer that? Or you'd like...
Oh, yeah, yes. The stone wall has been... It's been... It's been... It's not a property. Yeah, it's not. It's not going to be used anyway.
Right, as it defines the town line, it has some importance to the town for historical purposes. Is there any objection to us asking that that be preserved in large part?
There's no problem. I'm not going to discuss about... Maybe an early collection. Where there's a missing... It's a surface that is...
Right.
So that we...
Right. Particularly the park that's toward the east is still intact behind the homes?
Yes, yes.
Okay. No objection to that being preserved as a historical artifact?
No.
Okay. It has some value to the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just don't understand the historical significance. Okay.
In a town plan, all stone... It's a very important town line monument.
Yeah, but like he said, when they did the septic system, they took part of it down. That some future date they may have to... I'm just thinking, they may have to do it. And I would just think they just had to mark where the line was. I mean, I'm just asking.
Right. I heard the applicant say that he wouldn't be opposed to preserving that. Something that our town plan does request. Right, okay.
I was just asking if the line may have been stolen or originally created.
I don't know. That's a pretty tough one.
It's a little bit short, huh? Yeah.
Well, the town line between Mount Holly and Plymouth was originally the town line between Ludlow and Plymouth, or at the time it was Salt Dash. So it could predate the town. We don't always have such good monumentation for our town line. Sometimes it's quite hard to tell. All right, so let's see what else we talked about. All right, let's see. We had a question about clarifying the names and numbers. Correct the date on the survey. What did we mean by that?
It was dated 2026.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, okay. Those... That happens.
I bet you.
That's been fixed, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if that was the easiest... I mean, that was the only thing we asked for. That's pretty easy.
Too easy.
Little signature block.
Clarification of the names and numbers of the blocks. Oh, thank... I was just... By providing the existing, the previous subdivision, right? What else did you have in your list? You had a couple of things you said.
They have... You know, that's on your work.
This was for the other one.
Oh, it was for the other one? I think that was it. Am I missing anything?
The board signature block.
Yeah, there was a signature block. I think it's right by your thumb.
It's on there. All right.
I had a report permanent wastewater. We just have to report it one for us, which they did. They provided where it was, or at least what it was. On date on boundary survey, which they've changed. We asked if they referenced any other subdivisions or plats, which they did with the other... The one that's recorded with the town here. We got the...
Right, and now, and there's a number four in the notes that references the existing. That's great.
And then the original date of creation.
Oh, that might have the reference right there.
I know, it doesn't.
I might just save that one for something.
It doesn't say that either. If you want to add that, that would be okay. But I think it's probably fine without it as long as we can cross-reference it. If you wanted to add the book and page, if you're still... But I don't think that would be a problem. So, yeah, so we have the reference. I think we've got everything we asked for. Yeah. Anybody else have any issues? Okay, let's move on.
Just wanted to ask one quick question. The two buildings on Wagner's, they are both going to a 3. The septic's going up here.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Plus with... I wasn't sure that's the way you said it before, so that's why I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, so this building... Yeah, so this building feeds out to here into a septic tank. This building, and then it pumps all the way back up.
And this one pumps it up. And he pumps up to a separate one.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then, and this mound system, for what it's worth, is a certified installed mound system by a...
Right. No, you... The write-off had that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to confirm because I wasn't sure when we were talking.
There's a lot happening.
Yes.
Infrastructure. Yep.
It was fun looking at how many gallons per day.
Yeah.
And we moved.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
And then I just want to reiterate that the gray is where Johnny will be getting easements for that shared infrastructure. For, I don't know how important you find that.
To be conveyed on approval? Is that what it is?
Yeah. Yeah, just those will be the areas.
So those aren't recorded now? They look...
Yeah. Just those are the areas where any shared infrastructure or shared roadways are inside of...
A property.
Yeah. So, like, if we look over at the well to the east, that well will feed this Lot 3B building, but the well itself is located on Lot 3C. So they'll draft an easement for that well and infrastructure being on 3C.
There's no utility easements? It's all just... Other than those?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I think utilities run along the road. I'm not sure I put it correctly.
Yeah. I think Johnny... Interrupt me if I'm wrong, but I think that the utility easements are currently being looked into within this already shaded portion of easement area.
Yes.
The easement's going to be both utility and access.
Good.
Yeah, so it's a combination.
Yeah. There's just no different depiction on the map because it would get really...
Oh, are they two separate instruments?
I think... I don't know.
Yeah, they'll figure it out. So there'll be... Because the right of access is something that we require.
Right. And so that will have its own thing. And then it'll also be like shared infrastructure and the right to dispose to the mound system. I don't know.
But we can rely on an easement being conveyed to access this lot from the... Is this actually town... Where does Hastings end? Is this a separate drive off of Hastings? Or is this actually Hastings? I can't remember if...
I think it... Hastings ends and turns into a driveway.
To this driveway.
Yeah.
I see.
And, and there's this thirty foot right of way for Hastings, and I don't know if it, that's not a town road, is it?
Hastings, I think it is, isn't it David? I don't remember.
Because there's, there are signs, I mean, there's just a ton of signs at the end that I think.
I would say Hastings, at least up until the state ramp, it's got.
I think that's where it ends.
Oh, right there?
In town.
I see.
Johnny, you might know more than me, but I think that's where the sign is.
Okay, and that is, that is a shared maintenance agreement you have?
Yes.
Okay, is it deeded?
No, no.
Okay, so we're going to need a deeded access to a town right of way. So do we, do we have that today? We don't.
Unless it's buried in that original subdivision.
None of Hastings Lane is a town road.
What's that?
None of Hastings Lane.
Oh, very interesting. Huh, so the state, interesting. Good. All right, so we'll put on record that Lister David Johnson says none of Hastings is on the, is a town right of way. Sorry, Mr. Wagner, what was that? Subdivisions is part of our checklist, which is something we overlooked in our sketch review, is that we need access to a town right of way, town road. And you have that, you have an agreement with your neighbors to cross their land. But we're creating it, another lot even farther inland, if you will, which you will have deeded access to across your, your family's land.
Yes.
We'd just like to identify how you're getting to your property from the town right of way. The nearest town right of way, which is either Lake Nineveh Road or Hastings. And, you know, you have that, we just need to, we need to reference it.
If David's correct, then it's Lake Nineveh Road, because then Hastings goes into the state park that goes to the fishing thing. That's, that's, I don't know, three hundred yards.
Yeah, I just said where it's from. Right, okay, so, so your deed does have a deeded access, I would assume it would.
I'm reading it, but I have some.
Oh, well, that's up to you guys. I, if I were you, I would probably recommend it, but we just need to know that you have access to your property. Okay, yeah, yeah, so it's, we can find it in the deed?
Yeah, I'll, I'll check for it.
All right, so we'll just need to reference that from any decision we come to as one of our checklist items, so, okay. That'll be covered that. Any other questions from commissioners about the application? It seems pretty straightforward. Nothing? Pretty simple, so, all right. Yeah, that's next, I think, let me see. All right, interested persons are, are up next, so Mr. Urged, do you have any questions about the application, or questions for the applicants, or questions for the commission, or statements for or against?
I have no questions. My, my only statement would be starting back in one of my parents' ID property. He had good relations with Wagner's, and I would, that will continue, and I obviously have no objections.
Okay, any, any questions? Who brings the beer? All right, so thank you for that. I'll note that Mr. Ernst is recording no objections to the proposal. That's basically all that, if you want to say more, you can, but if you don't wish to, then you may leave at any time.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm going to say something, and then, uh, thank you everyone.
All right, thanks for joining us. Any questions from the public? Which is David. Questions or comments? None, okay. Uh, let's see. Well, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to, to close the hearing and enter a deliberative session. So moved. Seconded?
Yep.
By Jim? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, the hearing is closed. We will be deliberating. We have forty-five days to come to a decision, which will be done in writing. And we'll be in touch as soon as we can. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, thanks Johnny.
Now, six thirty-five, I'll call the meeting in order. Regular meeting in Mount Holly Planning Commission, Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Any changes to the agenda? As distributed, as posted? Hearing none. Agenda's approved, we have a set of minutes, two sets of minutes or one?
We have the public hearing.
Hearing and regular meeting minutes, have been distributed. Have you given luck with them?
This is the public hearing that we had last month?
Yeah.
Hey, John?
Yes.
I guess.
The volume is very low, I don't know if there's a setting on your mic or not, but I can barely hear you.
Okay, can we raise up the volume on the mic?
You can try, yes.
All right. Have you, Andy, have you reviewed the minutes? You were.
I have not.
Okay. Did you, did you see them?
Yes.
Any questions or additions? This was for the hearing. Okay, that's also for the meeting. Did you put in here what you wanted to say about the incident?
I explained that there was an incident.
Did you say what you wanted to say about it? You wanted it on the record, so I'm asking if you added what you wanted to say about it.
Yeah, basically.
That's what you want to say about it, okay. What, for I? Anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from October twenty-first for the public hearing and our regular planning commission meeting.
I second. Seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Andy, are you voting on this?
Yeah, I'm, uh, in favor.
Okay, unanimous. Minutes are approved, thank you. We have our annual elections for chair, vice chair, and secretary, according to secretary. I would move a slate of the same candidates if.
It's not moved.
Okay. I'll second.
You guys want some?
Any discussion?
You, I suppose I was going to ask you on the discussion.
I'm asleep.
What's the discuss? Anybody else want the job? Look at it that way.
Okay.
Sir, do you want the job? Andy, you want the job?
He's going, you want the job?
Okay, I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. What's that?
I should have put a nae on my own.
Yeah, just proposition.
Hey, it's been done.
I know that.
Uh, we have the annual approval of our rules of procedure. I think we have two changes, a whopping two changes, one, there was a, we forgot to update the, the hearing, I'm sorry, the meeting time and date. And the what was the other change?
The adoption date.
The adoption date, okay, so that's it, so how do we feel? Good?
Looks good to me.
Page three, and then the last, the final page.
Page three and eight.
Three and eight. Is there a motion?
Well, I got a question.
Well, let's get it on the table first.
All right. I'll make a motion to move the, oh, God.
Remanded rules of procedure.
Yeah, amended rules and procedures, conflict interest policy for discussion.
All right, I'll second, so now I need us, we can discuss.
Well, I'm just, haven't had the chance to go look at the ESAs you're referencing in here, so I'm not sure what they mean. I'm just, you know, under open meeting and section six means H. And then also, um, this.
So what was the question on?
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know, in other words, I'm just stating, I don't, I don't know what you're referencing. It says it there, but I haven't read it.
You haven't read the, what you're saying is you haven't read the statute.
The statute, okay, right.
All right.
And also, I do understand, though, if you're going to go in executive session, you're supposed to designate specifically why, and I know that the ordinance, uh, the state thing designates specifically a listing of why you would go in executive session.
That's probably under the one VSA one thirteen under.
Yeah.
Do we have a separate section for an executive session? I can't remember that we've ever done an executive session. And so they do it all the time because they like hire people and whatnot, but.
Right, but they're supposed, but if they go into something else, these types of personnel, they're supposed to say.
It's for, yes.
This not just personnel.
We do have it on page one here.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's VSA, era two thirteen.
Yeah, one VSA, title one.
And just the only other comment, two things more, I guess, when it says under section five, V five, A, Chair.
What page is it? Two, okay.
Yeah, the Chair signature shall be the official des, signature of the commission. But that sentence, that's you, that's when you say you're signing as the Chair. I'm just trying to clarify, make sure I understood it.
So like when we sign the plat, for example?
It says.
Approval of the commission.
Right, it says you're Chair.
Yeah, or if like we, we resolve to, you know, send a letter or what have you.
Right. Yeah, let's see. F, just need a clarification, because I got a little confused, same, same section, page two, section five. Commission speaks with one voice, if a member objects to an official action of the commission, they shall identify the fact that it's not the official position of the commission.
So what's your question?
I don't know how they do that.
So like.
I don't understand.
Which letter was it?
Um, F. Second from the bottom. I'm just saying, I don't.
I don't know, speaks with one voice is just sort of like a general parliamentary thing, like we, we move as, as a body, so like.
Yeah, I don't know what it means, that's what's confused.
So it's not like when we resolve something, when we vote, you know, to approve something, it's the planning commission does it, not like Stephen Michelle does it?
Right. Right, that's what I was.
Yeah, that's sort of like, you know, the.
But let's say so.
When, when we're criticized, we're criticized as a body, for example.
Right. But what I'm getting at is it says if one person, let's say me or.
It's, it's saying that if you have a difference in opinion from what the planning commission voted on.
Let's say you go, like you were joking, but let's say you voted nay for the.
The minutes, and that I had a, if I objected to the, the minutes, then I have to state that it's not the official position of the planning commission, that they're incorrect, because everybody else, the planning commission as a whole says they're correct.
I think this probably, this predated all of us, I think, maybe, maybe not you, but I think there was a time where there was a, a lot of contention on the planning commission many, many years ago, where there was, you know, people getting thrown off and speaking out of turn against the commission and things like that.
I'm just saying it's there, and I know it was there before, but I guess, when I was reading it again, I just didn't understand it.
There actually was a period where the, the planning commission was fairly contentious.
Yeah, I guess, to me, what it spells out is even if you have a different view than the planning commission does, it doesn't mean that you can go say that your view is the official position of the planning commission.
Even implying that you're speaking as the board.
You have to say that this is not the board's position, it's my own position.
Are you, are you requesting a change to it?
Isn't it public record when you vote?
Request to change, because like, like I said, I'm trying to understand.
Like, under open meeting law, isn't it public record? So if you were saying like, we're going to pass some new whatever, and you had, isn't it public record? Like, if Stephen wasn't in favor or John?
Usually the minutes would reflect, I mean, usually it's approved unanimously.
I mean, we, yeah, we haven't had a lot of contentious votes in many years, but, yeah, it, it usually is public record, I mean, the videos themselves are, so.
Right, so if somebody wanted to, they could know who was in favor of a certain thing or not in favor of a certain thing.
Yeah, this is, that's right, this is more of like somebody on the commission having their own individual opinions that they wish to like oppose the planning commission on.
They can't say it's the official position of the planning commission.
All right, now.
It's not like, like if one, like we.
There will be times where we have, we get.
I can't speak to, I can't talk to you and say this is the official position.
Right.
Unless.
Because you're not the board.
I've been authorized, and it is the official, you know.
Yeah, and it doesn't go so far as to say you can't speak out against the planning commission, although.
It just, kind of somewhat improper.
I can't, I can't say I'm speaking for them.
Right.
Right, okay, and like I said, I didn't understand, and I just have one other thing, nothing to do with this, so I could bring it up later.
Okay.
Because I had just read it. If there's a roll call of the votes, then the individual votes are recorded.
That's true.
If there's not a roll call, then you don't have to record who voted what, just the total.
Just the passage or not, yeah.
You probably wouldn't do that unless there was.
There can be a specific request for it.
I've got no problems.
Okay, any other discussion on, okay. I'll call the vote, then, all in favor of adopting the very minorly amended rules of procedure? Aye.
Aye.
That's a yes.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, that's great. Uh, so, yeah, well, that was unanimous decision, so we don't record anything about this. All right, moving on. Face, face report, please.
Okay, building construction registrations, Barker, Patchill Road, a twelve by thirty foot shed for Sugar Ring, I believe. Sherman.
The Bar, Barker?
Barker, yeah.
Oh, Keith Barker?
Yes. Sherman, Tiffany Road, a thirty-six by twenty-six addition to the existing house. Tilly, Church Street, this is the, um, on the corner.
Seventeen?
Uh, thirty-nine, maybe.
No, thirty-nine is the next one.
Thirty-nine's the main house.
Seventeen is the, the one across the street.
But it is, it is the one on the corner, a ten by thirty-eight, sunroom, thirty-eight foot sunroom and porch. And Rose on Mount Nineveh Road, lifting the house, constructing a new full basement and lifting the house.
Who's the owner, Mount Nineveh Road?
Rose.
Okay. We did, then we did a subdivision of theirs? Is that the subdivision a couple of years ago?
I think they got a boundary line adjustment, because they added land from Nineveh Foundation.
Right, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
That's good, so when they, they, they've completed it, they raised it, right? They poured a new foundation, is that what that said?
That's what they were proposing in the BCR, they.
Oh, well.
Hopefully they're seeing it's poured around.
It's a little too cold for pouring, I think.
No, they did it once, once ago, actually.
Sorry, Andy?
It's done.
They, they, they did. This, this work is done, that was done over the summer. They're filing the BCR.
It's done already, so the BCR was after the fact.
Yeah, okay. Other issues, I don't know if I'd ever reported again on the Armstrong camper by the river on Tarbleville Road. The second certified letter was also returned undeliverable. So I I believe that Mr. Armstrong has paid his taxes, so I, I don't know, he just didn't want to accept the letter. But I am at a loss as to what our next steps could be.
What is the, well, you may, as you're, in your dual roles, you may have some insight in this, I don't know if you've done it into your, in your capacity at the select board, but when you're trying to enforce the junk ordinance, what do you do when you, you're not getting cooperation from the landowner?
Well, I mean, for the junk ordinance, it's just been sending certified letters.
It's the same procedure?
Yeah.
This hasn't come up the same way?
This has not come up the same way, I mean, obviously our bylaw has enforcement mechanisms in it, but I'm not exactly sure how you initiate those, if, if it's impossible to communicate with the owner.
Yeah.
You, which you dress, you do the one from the...
Is the bylaw required? Sorry, is the bylaw required since by certified mail?
It doesn't specify?
I think we're, we're in the like, we try to be nice kind of thing, this, this is all mostly, as I understand it, not enforcement. Let me just, one more thing. Right now, I think we're, now what Faith is doing is very charitable, right, and we're like saying, here's what you need to do, rather than trying to initiate enforcement?
Yeah.
Right, so like a non-confrontational approach, for example, so we're, we're not I think if, if you get into enforcement, it's a whole other thing, but we try to give people lots of chances to be informed first. Okay, Andy, what were you saying?
Well, I was just gonna say, I, I've seen this dilemma before, back when I used to practice law. The problem with certified mail is that if the recipient refuses to sign it, it just, just comes back to you, that you don't really have any evidence that, uh, that the notice was received. So sometimes they're just sending it with regular mail or Federal Express or some other means where delivery is, uh, can be shown to occur. And whether they openly are, then the problem is on their end, not ours.
Uh, I did start with just regular mail, but received no response.
What you're saying, Andy, if it doesn't come back.
With regular mail, you don't have With regular mail, you don't have any proof of delivery, whereas like Federal Express or I guess the postal service is some level of, you can actually check if it was delivered, even if they didn't respond.
It's like halfway between regular mail and certified?
Yeah.
Okay.
On mailman says, shows like we deliver, it's still here. Yeah, registered, say certified, just suppressed.
Um, okay, I will...
Do you ever, you know, involving you personally here, but since you are the neighbor, do you ever see anyone on the property?
I think the last time I saw someone on the property was August 2020. The camper was placed there sometime, I think in 2021, but I think in the dead of night, possibly. But I believe there's, there was some evidence that someone has been there within the last three months. A vehicle was parked outside, and I think Jim saw it, and I didn't see it, somebody else did. Somebody else did.
Saw people there.
You were there too? You, you see anybody there recently?
Not recently, I mean, the most recent was like around the 4th.
This year?
Of July.
Of 4th of July?
Yeah, of July.
I just, um, you know, this is possibly declaring a bit of a conflict. Because it is next to our property, we have used the tax maps to post our property. And using the tax maps, we have posted the edge of our property, and the camper van is inside our property according to that, so I'm not quite sure what to do.
So you're a violation?
Uh, well, Alex is going to write to them, not, I'm not going to write, because I think that would be a conflict. And explain what we have done to see if that elicits any interaction to get them to move the camper.
You, you, my recommendation would be not rely on the tax maps, but can you get a surveyor to check that one?
We have been trying.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Surveyors are hard to come by.
Indeed. But yeah, uh...
So you're out of ideas, or you have a couple more of yourself?
Well, I can try again using some alternative delivery method. I mean, I think the main concern is if, if there's a flood, then the camper will quite possibly just float down the river.
Well, there's also, you know, there is this tricky issue, when we know about a violation and we don't enforce it, then we are liable.
Yeah.
That's the reason why fair enforcement of rules and laws is so critical, is because the town is financially vulnerable when you don't enforce them. So it's not an issue of confronting them, it's an issue of fairness. So everyone that's subject to the flood hazard by law, which is a law, needs to have the same treatment. So, we did it before, where we had to go to the, to the site, unfortunately, with a very contentious interaction. I hope it doesn't, you know, I hope this is easy, but I don't know, tricky. What do you do when you can't find them?
I mean, if there's nobody to, to engage with on this, it's a bit difficult to...
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll come back next month, let us know.
And I'm not sure that, you know, the town could, you know, bring a truck in and move it out or something.
Is this a junk issue or a river issue?
This is a flood hazard area issue.
Because there is junk, that's the select board, I know specifically my mother did it. They, I don't know how they got to the point, but they went in with a truck and emptied someone's whole yard. I guess the town, the town did.
You know, I, I remember a person that happened to go.
Okay.
I mean, one, one of the slight problems with this is if you try to move it out of the specific flood hazard area, there isn't actually any other room on the property. There's a cabin in the only area which is not in the flood hazard area.
In this case, it was junk that got taken away. There was a junk ordinance, whatever that means, and it's many years ago. Jim will remember, many years ago.
Yes, the one I'm thinking of was...
My, my thought is, try the registered letter, so the post office says it was delivered, and no response, then I guess the next step would be bringing it up to the select board. Because we can't enforce it, they have to.
What, junk?
No, the...
The situation.
No, Faith is, we don't, we don't have any enforcement.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so if you do...
We're just here supporting, supporting her.
And the post office says we delivered it, the presumption then is they received it.
Are you, are you now trained and certified as an enforcement officer?
Uh, I am not listed in the judicial bureau, but I could easily make myself.
Yeah, it probably is worth looking at.
Yeah.
To follow up on Andy's comment, when I get a package from FedEx, it's a package, they take a photograph. Even if they hand it to me, they make me stand in front of the door and they take a photograph. So that would get to what Andy's saying, FedEx might, if you said it's a package, they surely would. They might show, show a photograph in front of his place. Does he have a physical address or just a peel box?
He has a physical address, but from the ground list, when you send it, the post office on both occasions has changed it, it's an apartment within a building, and they've changed the number both times.
I mean, you know, it's like, if it were a legal issue, it might at some point, it isn't now, but you like get a, um, someone to serve it. So it's like you contract that out to a sheriff or somebody, but that would have to be a...
But I think there, I'll have to double check all the, the process, because we need to know, we need whatever evidence, possibly FedEx, whatever, to show that
Well, no, so when you serve a thing...
They've received, that they have received.
Well, that's what a server, a server does, like, so they, they, they hand it, you know, it's like getting subpoenas or something, you know? It's like when you, when you serve a notice on someone, they, they knock on the, they bang on the door, they handed you the...
Yeah, but I think, I'll have to double check, but I think we need to be able to show before that, that we have tried on the...
Well, I, I would suggest that you have tried, but you can try somewhere.
Yeah, I will.
Well, we're here to support you, there's no...
We're right behind you all the way.
Next flood hazard issue, Tim Martin. Following my interaction with him last month, um, the chair of the select board took a copy of the application package for a flood hazard area permit to Mr. Martin and requested that he complete it and submit it to me. This is based on the explanation that even if the building is exempt as an agricultural building, it can only be marked as exempt once the permit has been applied for. I haven't yet received that, so I will do what I proposed in the last meeting, uh, which is to write to Mr. Martin and explain to him the procedure and ask him to complete the application for.
Mark was able to confirm that he, he was able to hand it directly to Tim, so he served it on the, on him, yeah, okay.
The Garrow subdivision, Mr. Garrow did record the notice of the permit, so in terms of recording all the...
The decision for the...
He's recorded the decision.
Hmm, okay.
The outstanding element was the notice of the permit, which has now recorded. So, um, the next step would be signing the mylaws, mylaws, my law, which I have. Apropos of that, I, the planning commission received an email from a potential purchaser of...
Oh, the digital under contract, I think.
Yeah. It would be parcel number two, I think. The parcel, the bankage of the, the, the house, the existing house, which Mr. Garrow is living in.
I guess we...
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that was a question, was it?
Next to Russ, since the mothers, yeah.
Which house was it?
I only know it by the old owners.
Yeah.
That's how I know.
Uh, he was, the, the, she, they, the purchaser was requesting information regarding short-term rentals, but also asked about any other planning or zoning issues, and I did let them know that, um, until the subdivision is fully completed, the property couldn't be conveyed. So, um, I think the issue now is when the mylaws will be signed. Mr. Garrow has already paid for the mylaws to be recorded once signed.
It is interesting. It is interesting. You would think well, you, you don't have to have a title search to go under contract, you probably don't usually.
No.
I mean, there's, there's literally no property.
At that point, there's no problem.
There's no, there's no, he doesn't have a lot yet, so, I don't know.
Title usually happens like a week before closing.
I mean, the people don't ask to see deeds?
Yeah, you can see, I mean, you can get deeds, you can get information, but if you go under contract, attorneys don't go out and do title work until right before closing, because they have to, they do their title insurance, so they want to minimize the window.
Yeah, I know, but it's just interesting that would people buy all the...
I'm not, I don't, trying to remember if it was part of the subdivision. Would this house be subject to the Act 250, the rest of the property was?
Yeah.
Any of it is, if they try to make any changes to it.
So they, anyway, they asked, like, they, they...
Well, you all saw, you know, so... If it was still part of the Act 250.
All of it, once it's, once it's under jurisdiction, it remains.
The whole property goes for the board.
But it sounded to me like this person didn't have any information whatsoever. And I think one of the things that I would ask Faith to follow up on, if she hasn't already, is ensure that our requirements that Mr. Garrow disclose all this information, tell any potential buyers be observed. So in the decision, from memory, I'm pretty sure it's in there, we say that you, he has to tell people that it's not only subject to Act 250, but our decisions, so... Andy, did you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no, so, I think that I think you can cover it all.
My only question...
Sorry, what was that?
My only question, and we commend that, is was that property originally part of the business, or was it in his mother's name? If it was in his mother's name, it wouldn't be part of the Act 250.
It was all the same thing. For sure.
But that's...
That's what I was asking. Because I know when the...
You would have thought that if it was that one parcel, I mean, I'm not saying that you can always think...
Anyway, we, we can have, Faith is gonna, well, already has responded to him, but we'll, um, clarify a couple of things, so we'll also ask, um, actually not ask, but let's check what it says about the ESN2, if you can. I don't have a fresh memory.
The access ESN?
Yeah.
I think that only...
That was the question that we went back and forth with the attorney about, and we were like, don't worry, we'll like let it slide until it's sold, but now it's looking like it's gonna get sold.
Yes, my recollection is that, that that was only when parcel four, I guess.
Yeah, let's just double check.
Yep.
Alright, anything else?
I'm not sure about that, Faith. I think, uh, I think the decision made said before, sell any lot.
Okay, I'll, I'll go. Yeah.
I will add, it's, it's not at all surprising that the person's buying it to rent it for short-term rentals, but it's...
It seems that way.
Yeah, that seems to be the trend.
It did sound like it.
I mean, when people buy them at these prices, yeah, that's what, they're gonna try to make some money.
Yeah. And just to note, I also received another electronic submission of a, of a subdivision application from Gilbert, 180 Straight Road. I haven't had a chance to review it yet.
So I say that even though it was a...
Gilbert, a subdivision application.
Gilbert on the Straight Road?
Yeah, on the, it's the corner of Straight Road and Maple Hill.
Where, where is it at, just preliminary, is that complete?
I haven't heard, I, I just saw it today, so I've responded saying I'll review it and I'll let them know.
Okay.
Uh, as I mentioned, um, I've been asked several times by Ellie Siegordner about progress on, um, the deliberation.
We're done.
Okay. I'll let her know to expect the decision soon. Um, and then, of course, the last thing is the Belmont Store judicial opinion, which was sent, uh, when was it sent? A week or so ago.
Last week, sometime.
Which, um, well, the summary is that at this, at this stage, there is no need for an Act 250 permit.
If all of the, yeah, with the caveat, if all of the presentations are true and continue to be true.
Yeah, I still have to go back. Wrote a draft looking at just the, uh, the Act 250 determination letter on what they said. I do have some questions as to what was said, but I need to go back, and I haven't had time to go back to the paperwork.
Said by whom? You mean the...
In other words, there's a whole list of attachments.
Exhibits.
Exhibits and such, and I haven't gone back to look at that. Exhibits and such, and I haven't gone back to look at that, to compare to what was being said.
Said, when you say
Well, they were
Represented by the
The representations, yes, made by certain parties in there. And I guess I got one question for Andy, the email he sent that I didn't see, or I have to still go look it up. Did he send it as part of the Planning Commission or as an individual? I'm assuming an individual.
We voted that we were gonna ask for a jurisdictional opinion, right?
I don't remember if we voted on it, maybe I don't, my memory's gone.
I just said on my own initiative, it doesn't do with the planning commission.
We didn't, Faith is the one who requested the opinion, yeah.
Right, no, that I understood, I mean, because I need to confirm, but it's like they said, there's only four chairs, but you've got the porch and the deck, I don't know if that counts. They said the house on 39 is just a, you know, house, but yet, when I go to bum builders, they've got their beer trucks parked there, and they're loading beer to deliver. So my presumption is part of that building is used as a warehouse, for lack of a better word. The 17, again, is supposedly not commercial, yet my understanding is that's where he brews his test beers. In other words, he experiments and comes up with a recipe, and he does that there, not whether that's commercial or not, I don't know. I know nobody's living there.
Yeah, I think, so I would say to that, is there, if, if
I mean, those are the questions I've come up with.
I can't remember what they said the deadline was, Faith, do you remember what the deadline? If you, by next month, if you have questions on the accuracy of any representations they've made, or if you know that they're false, and we discuss them and we all agree, we can ask that the decision be reconsidered.
Well, I still
There are a number of things that probably are fairly borderline. One of the things that I haven't had time, I haven't had time, just so, full disclosure, I haven't had time to really digest all the details in the opinion. I just, honestly, I kind of looked at it and I was like, of course, they said that, but
Well, I mean, the
One thing, I have a couple of things that if, if people have time, I'm not sure I do, but if they were interested in looking to it more. What were the, what was the agreement on the boundary line adjustment, right? So they asked us for a boundary line adjustment based on certain representations about their plans. We put that in the decision. If they violated the conditions of that approval, that's a question.
I don't know.
The other thing is, when, when the representations of when the store opened, I think, could be something that somebody would fairly wanna look into, or it'd be representations about the kinds of changes that were made over the last year, so.
Well, they owned the six acres for six months or thereabouts, from February, March through September. They were subject to Act 250.
Well, no, 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 well
According to the, the thing he wrote.
Who wrote? Oh, she?
Quinn wrote, Quinn, and then it wasn't subject because they got rid of the six acres.
Okay, well, I, I don't know, I don't remember that she said it was actually subject, but she, I think it probably would have been, based on the acreage trigger during that time, but what I read in the decision was that she decided that all changes made in the entire time between our, another thing, I think it's fair to contest, is when the acreage was expanded. Was it expanded on the date we resolved, we approved the boundary line adjustment? Or was it when they conveyed property for any consideration? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, we only
We resolved in January.
Right, well, we only
So let's just say, let's just take, any, the state decided, it's their purview. They decided that everything that was done between January and whenever the field was conveyed, I don't know when that was. September, they said everything that occurred during that was cosmetic or minimal, or not commercial of any sort, or development that, or didn't qualify as development, that's what they said.
They actually, they said from January until the transfer of the meadow.
That's what I
That would, no, you said until
That's what I said.
I didn't hear that.
The transfer of the meadow out of
Oh, I meant the meadow in, I'm sorry, okay, let's continue. She said everything they did from the, whatever dates January, until the transfer of Alyssa getting the meadow, all of that was not an issue, because it was all less than an acre, right? Then she discusses in quite deep, in some detail, what happened between the date when Alyssa bought the property and the date when Alyssa sold the property, and that was a different analysis that Quinn did. And she then concluded on all of those different subjects, like a bridge across the, or a vineyard. She went through all of those things, and she said those don't matter. Either they weren't, they weren't material, de minimis, or they weren't commercial, like the bridge was not commercial.
I believe our, I believe our boundary line adjustment was assuming that they were in possession of the meadow, was it not?
No.
It was not at that time?
They want to do the borderline, the recommendation to her was to buy the meadow, because we wouldn't approve the borderline. We approved the borderlines for the
Yeah, so anyway, I
I wanted herself to buy the field to begin with, with the borderline adjustment, and we said it was a major change, so they needed to do a subdivision and recommend
That's right, it was the opposite.
Buy the field.
They said they weren't going to acquire the field, I think, and I've gotten
But we, in
But then they did it like a week later, I think, or agreed to a week later.
Our boundary line adjustment, according to this, was after they bought the field.
Well, according to that.
Yeah, so anyway, it's
It's the timing is
If somebody, you know, had the time, I don't, if somebody had the time, I think there's a lot of
Well, I'm just telling you what I saw, on a cursory, quick read, I again have to go back and read the supporting documents, if you will, the list is like that.
Well, you're welcome to, you want to give us a report next month?
I'll try, we'll see.
All right, then I think that was it for your report, right, Faith?
Yep.
Okay.
I, my comments now on the subject, since it's now?
Okay.
May?
Yes.
Okay. I have a question, and you brought it up, so as you said, we move as a body, John, and then Andy said he wrote that letter on his own. Should members be writing letters on their own and copying only the Planning Commission? Is it implied, when both you and Andy have been talking to Quinn quite a lot, that it might seem to her that it was coming from the Planning Commission? And then if it was interpreted as coming from the Planning Commission?
Well, what is coming?
His letter, even though he signed it, right, it was from him, but could she interpret this as really a planning commission, comments from the Planning Commission, and if that's the case, is that a violation of the open meeting law?
So, open meeting law, how so?
Any substantive decisions must be made by you as a body, as you did when you asked Faith to ask for
No, that's not what open meeting law is about, right? The open meeting law is about what, like a quorum, what constitutes a meeting, and what is public record. And it was just, so as long as we're discussing this, what is
Decision, there was no decision.
No, there was no decision, so everything that's submitted to Act 250 is public record, it's a state organization, so there's all emails, phone calls, that's all public record, so open meeting law doesn't apply there.
Well, it implies if, if he wrote the letter and said he was writing it from the Planning Commission.
Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not, I'm saying if he did, right, then that would be a violation, because you were supposed to act as a body.
No, not if he was authorized to do it.
You, all right, I asked you, was he authorized to write that letter? Steve Michelle already told me he never saw it, I just heard that a few minutes ago.
So I'm not clear on what the, the allegation is that he wrote it on behalf of the Planning Commission?
Imp lied to Quinn, that she gets a letter like this, and it's implied that it's from the Planning Commission. And it does not state, as it might have at the beginning, I'm writing this on behalf of myself, it does not say that at the beginning of the letter.
Ron, can I speak about
Andy, you want to speak to that?
Quinn had included it in her emails about the jurisdictional opinion and the information that he had. What I communicate her, because of my recollection is, I did not take any position or make an argument one way or another. I was just providing facts that I was aware of from my observations. So I don't think, one could conclude what I wrote as being on behalf of the Planning Commission. It came through my first email account, it was just my observations of facts that might be pertinent or decision, so that's all.
I, I might suggest that when one member of this committee, or the Select Board does it in their case, they make sure that it's clear, because I do believe one of you cannot act alone without a discussion. And by the way, Andy, your second reason is to revisit your previous, this is Quinn's previous conclusion, that the store and the Mount Holly Beer Company did not meet the one acre threshold. So you did have a purpose to this letter, it wasn't just fact, you were telling her why you were doing it.
Well, I was, yeah, because she had made a previous decision, and it wasn't worth revisiting, had all facts
Available to her.
So that was all that was.
I guess if the Planning Commission feels that's fine.
So we do also have an administrative officer that does all of Planning Commission's official emailing unless otherwise asked to, like if we ask somebody else to? Yes?
If instructed, I'll, I'll do things on behalf of the Planning Commission, but I don't have day-to-day control of the Planning Commission's email, let's just clarify that.
Okay.
I have my
The, the Planning Commission has its own email, though.
Yeah, that's me.
Yes, that, if that was being sent, it would be like the Planning Commission speaking as a body, not I mean, if I had some sort of grievance with something, Act 250, we'll just use that same example, if I had an issue, then I can write my own personal email, airing my concerns. Just because we're on this body doesn't mean we can't have a concern about a subject in town, especially when it comes to the state. Now, when we're on this body and we're making a decision about that, we have to recuse ourselves from it, if we have, you know, something to gain or something to lose from it, as we just discussed in our rules and procedures.
I, I would just suggest that if one, one member of this commission or the Select Board would write such a letter, they'd make it clear in the letter that it is from me as an individual, and that it does not appear to be from the Planning Commission. As compared to what Faith wrote, where you voted that you wanted her to pursue a J O, and she wrote her letter saying, as per request from the town, I am writing to you, that seemed to be the right way to go about it. Andy's letter did not seem like the right way, it's my opinion, I have an issue with open meeting law.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I don't remember exactly, maybe you can refresh my memory, when that was, but there were at least two times where we did discuss in an open meeting, going back to Quinn to clarify certain matters. One of the more recent ones was there was an allegation that we had invented or made up something Quinn said about being very displeased about the maybe misleading statements made by certain parties. And before we wanted to report back on that, we clarified that position with her. Before that, another issue that Quinn specifically asked for our input on, or clarification on, was she, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but she was not fully informed about the details of the boundary line adjustment, or when the acreage may have changed. And that discussion occurred, and that's what precipitated our statements in an open meeting, my statements in an open meeting, that Quinn was displeased. Andy was principally, as our secretary, principally involved with writing the, along with me and the rest of the board, writing the resolution for the boundary line adjustment. He was intimately familiar with the details of what was included there, and was very helpful for Quinn to understand those details. So I, I totally understand concerns about transparency, I do. That's something, I'm, I'm libertarian, like, I'm a civil libertarian, that's like my number one issue, I hear that. Transparency and fairness is, as I said to the Select Board last week, is one of my most valued traits. One of the things that I, I hope this, this board will embody. And it does cut both ways, right, so as much as we expect transparency and fairness and good faith from people coming before this body and others, we ought to do the same, so I think we can do better than that. But we will expect people in town, even though they may be friends of people in here tonight, or they may be doing things that people have a financial interest in, or may value, we still expect them to be honest and forthcoming, so it is something that we have sort of like mutual obligations. So I will commit to being fully, to the best of my ability, being fully transparent with everybody in town, you included.
But the open meeting laws are not about people lying to you, which is horrible, they should never do that, it's about how you act, not about how your residents and businesses act, so it isn't two-sided and nacious, is that the
Well, I've been, yeah, I've been very clear that the open meeting, I, I understand what you're saying in principle, but the open meeting law is not
Center of Sanders.
It is interesting, we got called, oh, it's the same thing.
I just got Sorry, I, Center of Sanders. I'm sorry, continue, I'm sorry.
The open meeting law is that a quorum of a body constitutes a meeting, all of those meetings must be public.
That's right.
A quorum is three or more
Yeah, there's, there's, there's no assertion that there was a quorum present for any communications with the state, so it doesn't apply.
Well, there was a quorum for hers, you asked her, for what, when Faith asked for the J O, there was a discussion here and you voted, so there was a true vote in an open meeting, and that's what she did, was, I think, follow the open meeting law.
We're saying that when there's two commissioners, because you, you have to follow open meeting laws when there's three for this body, which is a quorum.
Right.
When there's two, we do not have quorum.
And therefore you're not allowed to discuss substantive matters.
No, 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 you've got it backwards, too, you've got it backwards, so there's plenty of times where two, when you, that's one of the advantages of having
Two.
When, the advantages of having a five-person board is that two members can do things as like, as a committee, if you will. A three-person board, like our Select Board, any two people cannot work together, but on a five-person board, two can, three cannot. Because then every decision of three people is a decision of the board, and the board is not fully represented, and that process is not
And not public.
That's right, right, yeah, so that's why five-people boards can be helpful to getting things done. Two of us can go off and work on some, me and Stephen, being such good pals, we can work on stuff together anytime we want.
And not violate open meeting law.
But it's not the product of the commission until we bring it back
Right, and nothing, and nothing should come from the two of you as official business to the public.
It's not officially ratified unless it's done in a meeting.
And that was my question about Andy's letter, it implied to me it came from the Planning Commission.
Can I ask a moment?
You may.
First of all, I have a slight attack, so I'm gonna hop off in a minute. I view my email to Quinn as just providing factual information that I thought she was unaware of, and that my purport to her decision, I offered it as a unaware of, and that my purport to her decision, I offered it as a resident in the town of Holly, as anyone could. I think that since there was not a quorum present for those discussions, even if one wanted to consider it as me acting in my capacity as commissioner, I don't see it as a violation of open meetings law. I did not see it as communication, my role as commissioner, but I will, I take Ron's comment hard, that because I do have that role, I think in the future, when I communicate to anyone, as in my individual, personal capacity, I will take names to make it clear that I'm doing so in that capacity. But at this point, I need to go check for my slide.
All right, thank you for being here, Andy.
My pleasure.
We still have a quorum, so we can continue the meeting, so.
So long, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Andy? So I'll add one more thing to that, and then maybe we can move on now, but in a situation where two or worse, more members of the commission represented that they were making a decision on behalf of the board, that would be improper if it were not already authorized by this board in an open meeting. That's not, I don't think that's what's being alleged. I don't think you're saying that Andy acted on behalf of this board. If he had, I would 100% agree that would be improper. We have discussed this many times in open meeting and voted, I'll add, voted unanimously at every turn to clarify with the state the facts that we understood. Because those were not, and I'll say it again, you know, those were not fully disclosed by the parties. Quinn did not know about them before we informed her of like what we were, the things that we did in open meeting, like the boundary line adjustment, she was not, that was not disclosed to her. So... You have something else?
Yep.
Well, I'm just thinking what Ron said, and I'm going to do it back to a conflict of interest. I think what Ron, and correct me if I go wrong here, is he's talking about the perception based on who Andy CC, that it gave the perception, even if it wasn't in fact, that it might have been...
He probably should have sent it to me, and then I would have decided whether I sent it or not.
Right.
That probably would have been...
But he sent it to what, who did he send it to?
To Quinn.
Quinn, maybe.
No, 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 CC, you, when you...
Faith, John, and three different emails for John, I don't know.
Well, I, she occasionally will put my personal email on. I do not use my personal email for planning commission business, so that just goes into the trash.
And one of the reasons I...
But that's, I'm thinking perception. No, I'm just saying, maybe I'm putting words in...
Well, Ron is fully capable of speaking for himself.
The, but if it had gone to you, you might have caught some errors, insinuations, calling the bridge a connection to the meadow. It's not a connection to the meadow. The store owns both sides of that bridge, right? So that implied, I believe, maybe I'm referring, that a comment was being made to show that selling the land didn't necessarily mean it was truly separate. Quinn concluded it was, but that's an incorrect statement in here, and you would have caught that, I think. You know the map very well. All of this stuff about a vineyard, you probably already knew that vineyards are, first of all, it's not even the store's business.
I don't, I don't know anything about it.
Okay, well, this vineyard, there are photographs of wine bottles, and, I mean, it's just, this letter is egregious in my mind, and so I think you would have caught it. I hope you would have, John. But I don't know what Quinn, I can't read Quinn's mind. I might call her tomorrow and ask her what she thought.
Well, what she thought is in her opinion.
No, no, no. What I'd like, I'd like to understand if she thought it was from an individual or was this an act of the planning commission? Was the planning commission giving her information? Which, you're right, you know, you can, you should, you're a group. That's my, I just felt this was out of line, this letter, in different ways, not only being wrong, but not even understanding the law of agriculture.
All right, anything else?
No, I have my piece for now.
And that, I don't know if it's the appropriate time, but it brings up what I was going up alluding to when we were talking about the rules and procedures. It's one thing I need to do for the Board of Adjustment is make the Board of Adjustment emails available to the whole board. Right now, I only have, I'm the only one with the password into it, and I think the planning commission should have access to the official email account.
You get every email. I forward them.
You're saying that the planning commission should have access to what? The planning commission email?
The Board of Adjustment.
Every member.
Or the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, I would strongly recommend that's a bad decision for the Board of Adjustment to make. The chair should be the one getting and sending the emails, but they're all public records. They can be requested through public records requests anyway, but every email we get that's not trying to sell us some kind of software, which is the majority of the emails we get, I forward to you guys, so that's how it works.
Right.
It's usually a bad idea to let five people access the same email. It's just going to turn into a mess, but...
Or have read-only capability, maybe.
Well, it doesn't work that way.
Not on this account.
That's the obligation of being chair, is you make sure that...
Well, that was the additional thing I was going to bring up later, but since we're talking about it now, I figured I'd add.
Subdivision of...
We're up to the board here.
Subdivision of policy?
No, I think the only thing I had to report was the email about the person being under contract, which you covered already. I think that's it. Let's move on. I think we're to Lisa now.
Hi, Lisa.
Didn't take long, though.
I find all these meetings educational.
Have you had any fun yet?
Yeah, yeah, it's all good. Are you going to step up there?
She can catch us in her mistakes.
I don't think there's mistakes. I don't think there's anybody here that's really trying to act with ill regard, but I mean, if you're acting as an official body, there's definitely official ways to do business, and it's good to have checks and balances in everything we do. So you asked me to make some changes, which I, after about 100 messages to my surveyor, he finally did. He may never speak to me again, but the changes have all been made. So the correction was made to remove that person, you've got the block, the topography...
David asked for the corrections of the butters, right?
Yep, and then the access points are here, and I have submitted an application for those two driveway permits. Bovet is not sure that because it's a class four road, it's actually required, so he's checking with someone, and if it is required, he'll sign it, and if it's not, he'll send back my application.
Could I declare he consulted with me and we reviewed the town's class four roads policy because he thought the select board might have to approve it, but that was only if it was a logging road? He also pointed out that the two points already have an access.
They're already existing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and indicated here.
And whilst he has to communicate officially with you, my understanding is that his communication will be something along the lines that these are existing accesses, therefore I don't, he has read permission, it does not need to issue a town highway code.
The logs were all new a number of years ago.
And you decided to keep the boundary line on the, is it, it's still quite difficult to tell, but is it along the...
Because this is an existing road. There's like an existing path that comes through there and...
And where's the line between, I understand it's here, but where is it from here to here?
I believe it is this stone.
Because it's just sort of hard to tell.
Yeah, it's, oh, it comes through here.
By the circle.
Yeah, by the circles.
It's a straight time between the two.
Yeah.
Okay. On the bearing, okay.
They have a signature block.
It does, has a signature block. Yep, and a butters, a topography, so I think everything's been updated.
Okay. We have a revision by 1113, okay? That's, is that 25? Okay, awesome.
I find it interesting that they managed to get the acreage sacrificed.
Isn't that funny? I think he did do some math with these lines.
He had looked on something, yeah.
Because that was a requisite of my brother-in-law's. He wanted this.
Yeah, it's that hook, the stone wall coming around to the other stone wall, instead of just going straight across.
But, yeah.
You can swing that point and do anything you want.
Yeah.
That's true.
But I'm not kidding, it took me like 20 or 30 emails, messages, text messages, to get those few revisions, and I found it was like, I've already paid for this work, I want it done before this meeting. And then they finally responded back.
He probably wanted to keep your business. He probably sent people his way.
I've been known to do that.
Yeah, but that's my...
Remind me what the reason was for keeping it along the, is it along the center line of the arm up there?
Well, there is this here, but there is like an attic. You can actually drive out, and the cabin has actually been...
But you wanted it at the boundary on the center line? Is that intentional, right?
Yeah, he wanted to buy the property. I mean, this is here, and they, and my brother-in-law, my other brother-in-law wanted this to be on his property, so the line is just here.
He wanted it to be on his property?
The wall and the road. The road is going to be used by both.
Because it's like partly along the wall, and then it jumps over to the road?
Yeah.
Okay. There wasn't a particular rhyme or reason to that?
No.
Okay.
The only rhyme or reason I could see to it is that's what he needed to make up that exact number of lives.
Well, I think what Ron was saying is that you can have as much on that, but you know, I mean, like, I don't know, something to set for just running to the end of the wall and jumping over to that point.
Yeah, originally, my brother-in-law, that is conveying this, wanted to redo the cabin, and he wanted this jut out here originally, so this was marked already, so they wouldn't have to do this work again. Because he was going to, originally, we were going to get this piece, and my brother-in-law was going to keep this, and now he's not building. So then he said, you can have your pick, and we said, we'll take the front then and give the back to Larry. But this was done because he was going to put a barn here and do the cabin.
You mean, points were set?
Yeah, they were already set because he looked at it, you know, he's an engineer, and he looked at it and said, this is where I want this point to be.
But you don't have any points set along the road.
No, well, I got this one here, yeah.
So it wouldn't be any more engineering to put them on it. The reason I mention is, is it having a shared drive stinks for a lot of, you know, because then you have to negotiate.
Well, it'll be between us, and they'll have their own here anyway, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, because there's already, they all got their own individual...
They already have their own, yeah.
That says probably here from the flattest area we're using.
Yeah, that's where we were originally going to build this, like right up in here, overlooking everything, but now we're taking the front.
The cabin where the Ford cabinet?
I don't know. It says Troll House, but it's not, it doesn't say Troll House, it says, it says it in Austrian, Trollheim, but it's in pretty rough shape. We're not going to redo anything with it.
Actually, that was a lot closer to...
Yeah, I was thinking that was further down.
No, there's a ton of, before you get to Glenises, and I can't think of the guy's name.
I can't think of his last name, but the name is Chris.
Bobo, but I mean, the guy he bought from, you know, the older guy.
Daley.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, he bought from Daley and Hawkins.
Yeah, Hawkins.
Because Hawkins was right here.
Oh, is that the Hawkins piece down there?
Yeah.
Right here.
And then this is huge, and it goes down, and it runs all along 155, a major piece through here.
I was thinking, there was a rectangular Hawkins, well, that was sold just a couple years ago.
Yeah, that's that.
That's right, oh, right, that was from here to here?
The cabin.
No, that's from here.
Oh, this side, okay.
Down there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And right behind the blue spruce is a corner, it's a 30-acre lot from the 1830s. The corner is a point towards the river. You can still see stone walls going from their driveway down.
You were here in the 1830s?
No, I can recognize evidence. I'm a troublemaker. And it should have been part of mine, like all of that.
Keep dreaming, David.
All right, so we ready to go forward then?
Yeah, just the only thing that came up before was the, since it's a gift, that the requirements for the survey are probably less onerous perhaps than if it's...
Yeah, with the waste water.
Yeah, so Andy said he was going to follow up on that and look at our regulations. I think we could just do that right now, but I think that's kind of where we were headed with that, is to not require it.
Being gifted, not a major requirement.
Yeah, because you're not building any time in the near future.
Well, once we, once we're ready to do that, then we'll have Kevin come back out, and we'll do a septic design and go through the process with the state, yeah, do our state requirements.
So should Cindy's name still be on it?
I don't, I definitely don't think so, but I don't know for sure, because I know Cindy did deed over her piece to Greg.
I haven't seen Cindy in years, her interest.
Yeah, yeah, she's in Australia. It was a, that was another process because you have to have a special notary over there, and you have to go to like the capital of Australia and have a special like adjutant, a tester to notarize documents.
A capital?
Yeah.
That could be like 1,000 miles away.
Yeah. It was like five and a half hours.
Face is like, I know all too much about this.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's settle this then, and sorry that we didn't do that already, slipped through the cracks. So we're looking at... You don't have utilities on there at all, right? There's no service? Is there any service along the class four?
No. I can answer that one.
No, we'll have to bring it in.
They're going to do underground for you, you think, or not? What would you...
It'll be a requirement. My brother-in-law doesn't want the landscape to be clogged with power lines, so it'll be a requirement when Steve uses us.
Because there's not a lot of road clearing, it's pretty narrow.
Yeah, we're not going to do that. We'll bring it in down here, and we'll have Steve Flanders try to do the conduit and bring it up in, do a common box, and then we will build the underground power.
I think it's 1,000 feet from the last pole to the transformer, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
It's the limit that they can push.
Yeah.
One of the things that, you know, of course, we don't get to do when we waive the requirements for design is deal with what happens if it doesn't fit, right? So you understand that, right? If they, you might need to... If they, you might need to have access to your neighbor parcel for the disposal system or whatever, when you get to that.
Oh, right, it's, and my understanding from Greg is that when he deeds this over, there'll be certain requirements, like, if parcel two is unable to find a suitable site for septic, then we would have, we would have to grant them a site.
That's gonna be new deed.
It's gonna be in the deed.
Well, that's why I brought
And if you need to have a shared drilled well and power needs to be come in, like, because it's brothers, he wants it, he's an engineer, he worked for the city of Long Beach for twenty-five years, so there's gonna be a list of things that the brothers have to agree to when they accept this.
Well, that's, so that's the reason I mentioned it, is you're on top of it, obviously, but, you know, that's the, when you approve a subdivision design, before you know what's gonna go on it, you have to be aware that
Right.
you're gonna have to be flexible later, the owners are gonna have to be flexible, cause like, what if it doesn't, you don't wanna create an unbuildable lot, right?
Right.
Okay.
I don't think that's the case.
So prior to conveyance?
We did have soil tests done on parcel two, cause we had intended to build this, we had Brian Raffanotti out here, he was like, no problem, and we'd already know that there's not gonna be an issue in this field.
You know, you showed me and you showed me.
No, no, but
I mean, you can mount them almost anywhere.
Well, you'll probably do the wells up high, right, in the field.
Yeah, the wells would probably be up in here, and then we'll build somewhere in here, and then
Two hundred feet below, you know, what are the, you've got, looks like you have plenty of room.
Oh, yeah, if we can't put a well in septic on twenty-seven point four acres, we need to find a new engineer.
Yeah.
Do you find it?
Ron will sell this to the
Who?
Ron will sell this to the
Ron will sell some land?
Too late, it's gone.
It's gone. Did you meet your new neighbors?
Yes, very nice.
Aren't they very nice?
Very nice.
I told them they were gonna love you. I said, Ron's great, he and his wife are great people.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's the truth.
Are you, are you gonna make them part of your family to come over for Thanksgiving?
We're forty-nine, we're top-down for this Thanksgiving.
We have twenty-seven coming, I know.
You're a piker, forty-nine. I was trying to convince him I should be the fiftieth, but Suzie, he didn't believe that Suzie adopted me.
I'm checking, well, I'm looking through the
The being able to waive their
Didn't do it after sixty-three years, I counted it, my parents started.
There's all the spring down in here. They ran it down over the bank, almost our property line at that time, and they had an inch and a half line back up through.
So prohibited, that's where you're gonna need to come back.
And they use stainless steel pipes and the animals are chewing through it.
Yeah.
So you wanna read it to her, just like
Yeah, so this is what we got, right, so we're, we've proposed at our last meeting that we consider this, and we should vote now whether we wanna apply it. Rule, paragraph D1B says, if a minor subdivision is for the sole purpose of forestry, agriculture, open space, or a gift, a survey of the new boundaries is all that's required. Under these conditions, construction of any buildings or structures is prohibited. Additionally, a statement must be included in the proposed deed to the effect that the subdivision regulations must be completed prior to any future development. A copy of the deed must be filed with the commission and recorded in the Mount Highland Records.
I mean, all deeds, yeah.
The subdivision process may, will be required of the, any, but that doesn't make sense.
Of that any future?
Typos, I guess. Will be required of any future owner if any residential, industrial, or commercial development is planned. So, it's basically what we discussed, this is, you're, let me ask you, you're saying that this will be a gift from
Greg.
Greg to?
Chris and Larry.
Okay, and under that, we can apply that rule, I believe.
Yes.
And
When we get
Before any development is planned, or certainly undertaken, you'll have to come back for
Yeah, while we have the supply of building permit and then show where
We need to redo the subdivision.
Okay.
Because this, this is gonna say, no future development.
Okay.
And then when, when you have a plan for development, this is how we have to, you know, we don't wanna put the cart before the horse and say like, well, you have to have everything figured out now, so we'll say, we can go ahead, so you can convey it as a gift.
Right.
Or they can, he can, and then when you know what you wanna do, you come back and we redo it, but that's just
It should be
But it gets you what you want, cause
Yeah.
Yeah, it gets you as an owner of the land, which like you said, you didn't wanna do, rightfully so, didn't wanna do anything with wastewater and all that stuff, if you weren't the owner.
I've already spent too much time and energy and it's not mine.
And, well, so this would get you as the owner of that, this would get you as the owner of the parcel, and then you would have to go through the subdivision process.
Yeah, so you bring, you bring this back in and then show where the building and where the septic and utilities and
You do the thing with faith, you'll have a wastewater permit, you'll have a septic design.
Yeah, then you get it approved for that.
And then we gotta have a hearing.
Yeah, and the neighbors can come in, okay.
Yeah, so we ended up doing it twice, but, but what it does is this gets you the deed
Right.
potentially, if it's approved, so
Yeah, and that's what we, that's our goal right now.
So are we gonna apply this rule, D1B?
Yeah, let me just
Move forward with the subdivision as a gift?
Yeah, or some
I'll do it as unanimous consent, is there any disagreement with moving forward with the subdivision as a gift?
I don't see any problem with it.
All right, so we are, we are cleared for takeoff. So we can now, I believe everything else is set, we can set a date for the hearing, you're ready to go?
Yep.
So
The payment will be required.
Payment is required.
Okay.
It's two lots, we determine it's two lots.
Yeah. What's the payment?
There's a fee schedule over there, I can't remember offhand, we can do a month as our minimum really to get a notice out, we are bumping up against holidays, is there a problem for you?
No.
Okay, very Christmas gift for you.
What would've been nice if this was on my birthday yesterday?
Oh, happy birthday.
I'm wearing my, rocking my cap again.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, double nickels.
We're reversing Chris another year.
We're gonna work on the retroactive approvals, we'll work on that for the next revision.
Okay.
Two hundred dollars per lock, you can pay the twenty-five dollars to record a mile iron.
How about this, how about we
The fifteen inches of room.
How, how much do we spend on the notice itself to post it in the paper?
I think it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
All right, how about this, how about we, um, so let's say it'll be, it'll be covered by one, so how about, if, if you're able to come back to us within a year with the final design, we would waive the application fee for the next hearing. Is that, is that agreeable to the board?
I'm hoping to have something, hopefully here in spring.
Is that, is that agreeable to the board?
I mean, that
As long as we got, our costs, the town's costs are covered by the four hundred we would receive for two hearings? You know, it fades time and everything, but
It's kind of redoing what we've done, but it's sort of revisiting it, cause I feel this
It's an awful lot, you know, when we're redoing something within a year, it's an awful lot to have somebody to pay twice a month.
Right, and we don't do certified letters to the neighbors, we just send them letters.
No, the major cost is the
Hearing is the biggest cost.
Newspaper.
Are we agreement then?
Yeah.
Okay, is it acceptable to you? All right, so are we looking at, is it the seventeenth, no, the sixteenth?
It'd be the sixteenth, seventeen, eighteen, uh, sorry, sixteen.
The sixteenth of December.
So we should say five-thirty on the sixteenth?
Yeah.
So you keep this?
Uh, yes.
And the beauty of it is if she does her Mylar done, then really the process should be fairly easy next time.
That's optional, so you can roll the dice and have the Mylar produced, expect, you know, in anticipation that we approve it, if you don't approve it, then you've wasted some money in preparation, but the advantage to you is if it is approved, it's ready to sign pretty much.
So the surveyors supply the Mylar? Or do I just take it up to Staples and say, I need a Mylar print of this?
I think most surveyors can do it.
Okay.
Sounds like you've tired your surveyor out.
I'm probably gonna ask him though, to take Cindy's name off.
We don't need a Mylar for this.
We don't require the Mylar for the hearing, I'm just saying.
But if I had it here, then you could sign it, if nobody came in.
Well, we need the decision first.
Yeah.
And it's
We usually have a fairly good turnaround time on the decisions pending no added complication.
Yeah, we've been doing about, about the next meeting.
So it'd be in January?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We're not gonna show up on Christmas or something, probably to discuss it, but
Not how that could
Yeah, I know, you don't care.
I don't care what
All right, I'll probably have him make the one change, though, have my sister-in-law's name removed, cause I don't believe she's an owner anymore. I think when he started, she was, but I don't think she is anymore.
Well, do you wanna, are you leaving that with us?
Yeah.
Why don't you cross off that you're gonna change?
I'll just have him do that, and then I'll, and then I'll let him know that we're anticipating
So for the hearing, we'll need the final version.
Okay. Just say, tell her to take, tell him to take that name off.
Do you need two copies, Shane?
Yes.
Yeah, well, whatever. And just bring us whatever it is, the final version of the hearing, and make sure that we get that done.
And then if they, if we get it approved, now we just have to find out their turnaround time for the Mylar.
Yeah, I think
It should be relative, I don't think it's really that much of a difference.
It could do.
Yeah, but I'm like wondering if you had the, the thing, if somebody else could print it, like Kevin, like if he has the ability to print a Mylar, or if it has to be a surveyor?
I, I think it's just the practicalities, cause I'm feeling Staples and often don't do Mylars anymore, somebody mentioned that to me.
Yeah, but I wonder if like Express Copy Manchester, like Don Riser's old business mic, or somebody else, I'll figure that out.
When you learn, you tell us, cause then we could answer the question for other people.
Yeah, because like you said, it's, it's been a little bit of a hassle getting
You know, most everybody's been doing it through their
Surveyor, yeah, most of the surveyors produce them, I think, but
But like, you know, like, some of the engineers have that ability, like, I know, like, even Michael Marquess in Bell's Falls, like he printed old septic permits for me, from the microfiche.
Yeah, when, when it comes to a survey, sometimes the surveyors get a little touchy about reproductions, like they want, they want that to be their, their work.
Yeah, so I'll just have him take her name off and then tell him that I would need a Mylar once her name is off.
Well, just to be clear again, for the hearing, we require two paper copies, it's optional whether you bring a Mylar at that time or later.
Cause if there's a change, then, then you'd have to recreate another Mylar.
If there's a change, or if it's not approved, then you've wasted money on the Mylar.
Okay, all right, well, I'll get
If you're not like, you know, it, it seems some time to have it ready, if you're really, you know, under the gun for time, but
No, we can get that
Okay, well, then, most cost-effective is to wait till we're done.
All right, thank you all.
All right, thanks.
See you in December.
See you then.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
You too.
It runs if I can go, remember? There's gonna be any left, though.
Unfinished
No.
Say again?
No evil, no You know, you could've had five or six the other morning.
Then I usually worry
Oh, one, I saw him out there.
Oh, the turkeys, I saw it coming down Hillville, I saw twenty of them on his land crossing the road.
There's now only nineteen.
There's now only nineteen.
I think that's the group of twenty-three that's
The housing, as you may have, the housing study is nearing its end, they want to send us their draft, I believe in January, so we will have that, the select board will get it the previous week, then we'll get it, and we can feedback, let's see, so that should be, I think, yeah, so by our and in January, since the select board will have the funnel draft the week before, the housing contractor, SC group, would like to do their presentation at our January meeting.
Okay.
So we can just sit back and watch from this part, or, you know, give some feedback, it'll be like a, a public meeting.
Okay, with us and not the select board, or select board and us?
Well, so Jeff wasn't sure whether they would wanna come, like, be it's a joint meeting or not, so they'll be able to discuss it like three or two of their meetings, but he didn't wanna take the full select board meeting for a presentation, so we can do, they'll announce it the week before, I think on the thirteenth, although I'll send you guys one, it's, it's gonna be in the chit chat too, I think, next week.
I would imagine.
But we will have, I think on the twentieth of June, we have the housing presentation here, but that way the select board will know about it on the thirteenth, so they can come, and then they will, whatever, give their final ratification if, if they wanna do that, I think in February, I guess, so that's it, so I just wanted to prepare you for that, so we'll have a regular meeting in December, and other than, well, I guess we may, we will have, we will have this, sorry.
Subdivision regulations.
Um, let's just jump back on that next month, so let's, let's start to get into it, let's take a look at what, I'll try one more time to get stuff from Cavendish, and let's take a look in December with what they've put together.
Yeah, so we have, the subdivisions like we have currently keep going on at the rate that they're
Well, I think they're gonna keep Well, I know, it's, it makes sense to have some regulations that we can actually follow better, so, all right, yeah.
Now, if we're gonna do the subdivision thing, I'd like to revisit the construction registration ordinance to avoid what happened with faith, where it says in the ordinance, as soon as you pay the money, you can start working.
All right.
Well, you, there's, the, the registration form says if you've got something else.
From my understanding, the registration form isn't even our form, it's the Lister's form, it's
It's our form.
It was redesigned by us, or by the planning commission.
Yeah.
Even though it was primarily originally for the Listers.
Well, I mean, generally, so the town has any idea what
Yeah, it's like doing
Right, it's, what is our customary done through zoning disclosures, which we don't have, so we have some other mechanism for it, to do
Yeah, I know, I'm getting tired.
So, we don't necessarily have author authority to do that, ordinances like that, so it's not within Title Seventeen or our purview, so if we did something just as an advisory to the select board, we could come up with a draft that we
Probably could ask for their permission to
We could, at the next meeting, they could ask them
Well, cause I'm, the only reason I'm doing it is I looked at it and
No, it sucks.
He was, it's, well, that, and it says, you got permission to start and
Yeah, it causes no end of headaches, yeah, I agree.
And it's on the website, and if I were coming in from out of town
So, do we wanna do that, do you wanna ask to, I mean, it's potentially a minefield.
I do believe that when this was raised before, it led to a discussion, I forget exactly which forum, which suggested that we're, we're sort of grandfathered in right now, but if you try and redo it, you wouldn't be able to.
So, so yeah, I mean, that was sort of part of my analysis, is that I went looking for specific authority for even the town to read, to, you know, if you were to start from scratch, if you wanted to write that, there's this sort of very broad five, four minutes, I think I got you. All right, so, this is very broad, like, the town's police authority that you could ground it in, which is like the authority just to control, the select board has authority in very vague terms to control the town, you could ground it in that, but it's tricky. So I would say, probably putting this ahead of getting real traction on subdivision is probably not our best interest, because it's gonna raise some hackles, it's gonna get people pissed off, like
Yeah, I think.
All right, well, everything does. Well, everything does, so we just have to go into that knowing that everybody's pissed off at us all the time.
I was just looking at it and saying.
Do we wanna take on two, like, what's more important for us?
Yeah.
Is it to fix that or to like fix this mess?
I mean, ultimately, and this is not probably the way to look at it, but it being wrong and somebody going and doing, like, starting a project or whatever and saying, us trying to have, look back on it is easier to deal with than our subdivision regulations.
I hate to, you cannot tell somebody you just started, you know, you dug a hole or poured concrete or had the buildings have done, and she has to tell them, oh, you got a problem.
Well, the thing is, I can't tell them that. I can say, you need to file a flood hazard area or a river cover.
We even drafted a change. Five years ago.
I know, I remember.
Something like a.
Because I actually have both right here. Here's the existing one.
Oh, no, no.
Warren Paul or Antarbal, Peter Heron, and, yeah, I mean, we, uh, let's table it until we get the subdivision fixed and then.
Okay.
Because it's not in our.
Right, no, 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 I'm just trying, like I said.
The select board if.
Only reason I was doing it is.
We have kind of a hands-off select board. No, she.
Yeah, basically.
I mean, yeah, if we had, you know, our select board is kind of a little bit like hands-off, which is not criticism, it's just the way it is. That would be something that they might consider doing on their own. You know, you know.
Okay.
Siri.
Was it me?
Siri.
Yeah, somehow Siri.
Decides to try and do an occasion. All right, that's, let's leave it there, let's continue with subdivision rather than picking on something controversial.
Can we go on now?
Yeah, new adjourned. Oh, wait, wait, no, wait.
Public comments, upcoming.
Public comments.
I made my public comment.
Okay.
Okay.
What else?
Upcoming meetings.
Well, that's what I was discussing, so we have the public meeting in January for, it's still, I'll send final dates, but I think it's the 20th, whatever it is, the 20th, for the presentation of the housing study.
The public hearing on September.
16th.
16th.
Hearing for Kelly subdivision.
Your deliberation meeting for the Wagner subdivision.
When do we wanna do that?
Well, what?
It's best, it works best when we have.
The Wagner, right? The one at Minnabook.
What if we do like, uh, December 25th?
Works for me.
What works for you, John?
Well, we should meet you next Tuesday. Next Tuesday.
November 17th? Eighteen. Oh, yeah.
Eighteen, whatever, yeah.
I mean.
Today's the 18th, tomorrow's the 25th. It'll be the 25th.
Oh, yeah.
At 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM? Six?
Six. Six.
Most of that works for Andy.
All right, November 25th.
I don't know whether Andy's gonna be available or not.
6:00 PM.
I don't even know where he is.
I think he's in Texas, but I'm not positive.
Are we even quite done? Yeah, yeah, because we ended it, even though I, I said it.
It was, it was just, uh, it was idle, there was nobody on Zoom, so Zoom closed it automatically after 40 minutes of idle.
Oh.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, it shuts down, correct, yes.
It's not a wet time.
Does it keep recording?
Uh, the, I mean, yes, I do, but.
Oh, you are still recording?
That's good.
I just barely noticed the screen was all fuzzy, I had my, my meeting on the 25th.
Six, he said.
Six? After that.
That's on Wagner.
That's just a Wagner meeting?
Yeah, that's a, that's a private meeting, that's a deliberation. Exempt from open meeting.
I know, I read it.
There can be a lot of confusion with this crap, yeah.
I'm still not satisfied, but it'll, it'll, it can percolate.
It'll work out.
Yeah. If you need anything, just bring a turkey.
All right.
Or a goose.
That's it then.
Or a goose. Well, technically, he's gotta bury him or burn him.